Recording in progress.
Bob, you're up with the mouse.
Well, Jack from Transfer Station said he won't be here till around seven. I don't know what he's gonna talk about.
I have no idea. Good evening and thank you for joining us for the Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. The time is 6:03 and I ask that you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, I mean, Janice and I sent this in. We have anybody else? Anybody on Zoom other than our Selectman, Joe Simone? Good with that. Next is Administration. Mr. O'Meara, do you want to talk about Halloween hours and trunk or treat?
Well, trunk or treat is already scheduled. There are postings around town and on the website. I did receive a call today from a parent wanting to know when Newton is doing his trick or treat. And in the past, there's been dialogue about having it on a weekend or having it on the 31st, would it actually happen? I'm told that it's historically been on the 31st and 5:30 to 7:30 would probably be the ideal hours to do that. Trying to find the trunk or treat.
The trunk or treat will be on October 19th at the safety complex between 4:30 and 6:30.
Yes.
And yeah, Halloween last year, Matt thought that he wanted to, not him, some residents asked to move it. And so I know that there was a poll online and overwhelmingly, everybody wanted it on Halloween. So we're gonna keep on trucking with having it on Halloween.
Just be cautious walking along the way.
Of course, always be careful, wear flashlights, shiny clothes, stuff like that, reflectors. Okay. Next up is...
Trish has an emergency management update, so I can yield the floor to her.
Trish.
I'm so glad there's so many people here. This is wonderful.
Very busy.
Try not to hurt anybody in the way out.
Yes, thank you, everyone. This is an ELC emergency management update. I limited it down to about 27 pages, so I'll try not to talk too long. So thank you, thank you. So a couple of things. COVID is not gone. You've heard me say that a number of times. We've got a lot of pockets of people with COVID, testing positive for COVID. I'm getting calls looking for test kits. I'm informing the residents where to go. I will tell you I had a talk with our town administrator because some of our town employees really need some test kits. Mine have expired a long time ago. I've talked to the state, I've talked to FEMA, I've talked to Homeland Security, I've talked to public health, state public health. Nobody has them. So I've ordered some and once I get them, the plan will be the certain people that are exposed and have no choice but being exposed to residents, they'll each get one kit, which will have five test things in it, so they can test five times. And I will go over the procedures again. Just because you don't feel good, you don't use it. So I will cover it with the employees once those come in, but I just wanted you to know that. The town clerk has asked me to tell you, please, if you are sick, don't come in. She does not want to see you. If you come in and you're sick and you cause us to have an outbreak at any of our town buildings, we will be forced to close. And that's not recommended, especially, we've got budgets going on, we've got elections going on, so please stay home. She's asked that you use the online process payment method for both registrations, renewal registration, and your taxes. She also is getting inundated with phone calls about voting. Please go on the website. There's all kinds of information. The town website details for absentee ballots, that's available online. You can print it out and then either fill it in, bring it in, mail it in. But please try to do everything online. That's coming from Mary Jo, our tax collector. To let the Selectman give you up to date with our generators. So every year, I meet with Tri-State Generators, which is where we have our maintenance contract with for all our generators, for all our town buildings. And I met with them last week. Everything was pretty good. A couple of them had a couple of small coolant leaks. Those were taken care of. One needs a battery. The lifespan on these batteries, it says, was three years. This one was dated 2000 and here we add 2024. So I did authorize him to get us a battery for that one, but all the rest were fine. So when I get the report, I'll give you guys a copy, you Selectman, a copy of the report. Sorry about that. I met with Homeland Security and FEMA regarding our April 2024 ice storm. Mr. O'Meara was there, too. This is now a new team, different from the team I'm working with for the July last year storm of 2023. Interesting mix of people. And once we get our labor and all our invoices into them, we will get reimbursed 75%. In addition to the April storm, I've been working for quite a while on the July storm. July of 2023, unfortunately, they didn't clear a disaster reimbursement storm until January of this year. So they waited seven months. I mean, why rush into these things? It's a typical government deal. So after seven months, Mike and I had to go through and with the help of Jennifer, pull out all invoices, because I've got to match invoices with labor and what we did. And if you remember, and the Selectman Simone will remember, that's when we had a lot of trees down, a lot of power outages, pack of metals was inaccessible. We had to feed them and Joe helped cook. So we've got some expenses that we can put in here. And this year, because, you know, they change it all the time, they're also gonna reimburse any other labor. So I've already written down the amount of time Jennifer has spent on this. And actually, Peyton last year spent a lot of time on this, too. So I've been documenting that labor, Jim's labor for coming. So that will be, that will match. We've got, they will reimburse that, that particular labor 100%. My labor for doing the administrative work, I get 5%, I have to put in 100%, but I only get 5% of my 100%. It's unbelievable, unbelievable. So I'm working on that anyway. The downside of all this, and I've said this to you, but for all of you in TV land and thank you for all of you thousands of people listening, the problem with this is when we have a grant, reimbursement, it's not a grant, it's a reimbursement. Many times, and let's use the July storm as an example, that happened July of 2023. In order to get through that storm, which was a horrific rainstorm, we had a lot of road damage, a lot of shoulder damage, culvert issues. Because they're now working on those figures in 2024, all the money spent on that by our road agent was in his budget last year. When we get this money reimbursed, it can't even go back into his budget line. It's going into the general fund. We run into this all the time. I almost feel like they do this on purpose. So I'm hoping if I can expedite this April storm, if I can get everything in quickly, maybe we'll get a check this year, so that could reimburse his budget this year. It's a very frustrating, frustrating thing. Also, Mike and I are, we're still working on, we've got two bridge grants out there. You remember me talking about the twin culvert grant? So that is still out there. We ran into a little bit, and I probably shared this with you, a little bit of a hiccup, because in order to decide how much money we're gonna get for this grant, and this is the twin culvert at Country Pond in Wilders Grove, I had to document how many miles it's gonna take for the detour when we do the culvert, how many detour miles that people will have to go. I had to tell them how many residents lived on the island that have to get to the mainland. And when I explained there can't be a detour unless we can use a boat, they can't have to stay on the island, they can't get to the other side. And the last time this happened, we actually had to get an ambulance and a fire vehicle on the other side in case we had an emergency. And they said, well, then just block one lane. And then how much miles would it be for one lane? Like, the whole culvert is the whole road. We have to dig up the road. So they talked to three different Homeland Security people to try to figure out how to give us money and we can't have a detour. So I'm still working on that one, extremely frustrating. And then the other one is, so our bridge grant from the Department of Transportation, and this is also Wilders Grove. We've been on a list, we get inspected every year by the Department of Transportation. And we actually have been on, they inspect us again every year when I've got the printout. And back in 2011 was when it started to be of concern. And years and years ago, for all of you people that are listening, that were here, you know, 800 years ago, it used to be a bridge. It wasn't a road. It probably should be a bridge again, not a culvert. But at any rate, they are working on, they're actively getting a hold of Jim and myself, and I hope Mike is on the string of emails to work on this. But we're getting closer to maybe something coming to fruition on that. So even if the other grant, because I can't do a detour, doesn't happen, we'll have this one. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the tower. We're still waiting to hear back from legal counsel. I called yesterday, I called again today. We just want to know if their legal counsel saw what our legal counsel did, so that we can actually plan a public hearing. But right now, it's too premature to do that. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Very much for all the work you've been doing on this, Trish, too.
Yes, Trish, thank you.
Ms. O'Meara, you want to talk about the MS-1?
The MS-1 is a summary of inventory evaluation for the town of Newton. It's prepared by Chris Murdo, our contract assessor. It's multi-pages. It's a pretty interesting reading. You've had it, so I'm sure you've taken a peek at it. But in order for it to be submitted and forwarded to the DRA, it requires that you approve it and then sign it.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to, I move to approve the DRA MS-1 summary inventory evaluation as recommended by our contractor assessor.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe A. It's a roll call vote. Joe Simone?
Joe's on mute.
Well, if he's on mute or if Robin has him muted.
There it goes.
Aye.
Hi, Joe.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dan's an aye. That's unanimous. Alrighty. Next up, budget line transfer for the Fire Department?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a budget line request by the chief, the Fire Chief. It's an intra-department transfer meeting within his operating budget, and he'd like to move monies from two different lines into his grant match line. He customarily had $30,000 in that line, and like for the last two or three years, there's been zero expended, probably because he's been securing grants that don't require a match. However, in this one, he's applying for a grant that requires a match, and he wants to put that money in his grant match line. One of the requirements to be considered for this grant is that you have to show them your budget, where you actually have it in your budget, and you don't have to go looking for it if they say, yes, you have a grant. So they won't even consider, read your application if you can't show them that it's already budgeted. So that's the method. I asked the chief to look through his budget. He did this on his own. I didn't, I didn't tell him what to do or what to take. He knows his budget. He's a department head and he felt it was preferable to take it from equipment purchase and protective clothing, $2,500 each, and $5,000 will end up in the grant match line.
That being said, do I hear a motion?
I move to transfer $2,500 from line number 4220303, equipment purchase, and another $2,500 from line number 4220309, the protective clothing, into line 4220057 for the grant match.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe A. Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous. Okay.
Next item is a request from the chief in the form of a requisition for purchase. These are components for an ambulance. The total is $23,550.51. The chief indicates that this is a sole source provider. It is Stryker Sales out of Chicago, Illinois. And he's asking that the funds be withdrawn from the revolving fund, which you control. It's the Fire and Rescue Ambulance Program Revolving Fund. So it would be two motions. First would be to approve the request. Second would be authorization to withdraw that money from that newly established Fire and Rescue Ambulance Program Fund, Revolving Fund.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Bob. Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
And the second motion would be to authorize the withdrawal of $23,550.51 from the Fire and Rescue Ambulance Program Revolving Fund.
I move to approve requisition 1090FD in the amount of $23,550.51 for EMS equipment provided by Stryker Sales LLC. Funds to come from the Fire and Rescue Ambulance Revolving Fund.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Joe Simone. Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that the folks at home know, essentially, what Selectman Conley did was, he rolled two motions into one. He approved the requisition and he also authorized the withdrawal to come from the Fire and Rescue Ambulance Revolving Fund. So we're good on that. Long as the minutes reflect that it was a combined motion.
Okay.
The next item for consideration is three standard veterans' tax credits. And they have been approved by the contract assessor, and we're asking you to approve these.
Okay.
I move to approve veterans' tax credit for Tax MAP 14-1-14, beginning tax year 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe. Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous. Before you go on, Jim, do you want all of these to say beginning tax year 2025? It's only one of them says it.
Just one.
Just the one.
Just the one?
Yep.
Okay. All right, my bad. Go ahead.
I move to approve veterans' tax credit for Tax MAP 2-1-7.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe. Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
I move to approve veterans' tax credit for Tax MAP 6-9-14.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe. Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
The next item for your consideration is the scrap metal vendor saga. We don't have anybody here from the transfer station, so, Mr. Chairman, if you could pass this over, we could keep going.
Yes, we're gonna keep going.
And if we're here by second.
If we're done, we're done. If we're not, we're not.
Well, then, let me take advantage of the fact that we do have some information. Some time ago, the transfer station manager sent us all documents that had a list of three different vendors on it. It's Winifield Alloy, Hardy Motors, and Grimble, along with NRRA, which is the National?
Northeast.
Northeast Resource Recovery.
Resource Recovery Association. He recommends Northeast Recovery Association because they offer the best deals to the town. According to the document that he sent, the first three vendors would charge us to take our middle away. NRRA, it's the acronym for Northeast Resource Recovery Association, has indicated to him, and he put it in writing, that their quote is roughly $30 per gross ton with no minimum tonnage, and that $30 per ton comes to the town. So if you're inclined to, I would call it a water contract to NRRA for the removal of scrap metal from the transfer station, that would probably be helpful for them. I know that the board was interested in learning what the tonnage is that actually comes out of there. Jack has that information. However, I don't think it's germane to this. It's a different piece of the business.
Yep.
I think I have that on there. Yeah. If you're inclined, if you want to try and wait it out until Jack is here, that's fine.
I think Jack, I, I inquired with Jack, and I think he said something, was somewhere in the vicinity of 60...
Tons?
No, 600. The company's looking for 100 ton, right?
Yeah.
So we, we produced 60,000 ton. We were about 40,000 short for the year of being able to produce. And we'd be looking at those astronomical piles, trying to, trying to keep it. So I don't believe that that would be feasible. We just don't have the room down there to try to store that much metal.
I'd like to move that we want the contract to NRRA. Move on.
Second.
Or allow the town administrator to sign it behalf of the board?
Motion made by Joe S., seconded by Joe A. I'm not inclined to use the word contract.
Agreement?
I'm inclined to use them as a vendor.
Yep.
I don't think that I want to sign a contract over the course of...
You don't want a sole provider right now, in case you need a backdoor.
I just, I just want, like...
Then we'll change the contract to agreement.
So your motion could be for the next 12 months. I've already spoken to Mr. Povero, who's been kind enough to release a piece of equipment. So he's been managing that pile. I know you've seen it come down over the weeks. I've spoken to him. He can simply step away from the process. NRRA will come in. They're gonna use their own grappler to grab everything.
I'm just, so here's...
It doesn't have to be a contract. It could be a one-year agreement that gets reviewed every year by the board based on...
I'm not even sure one year. This is a fluid thing. We all know and agree that this transfer station needs to be handled, and I don't want to be tied down to anybody right now. Next year, we have the disposal companies coming up. So I mean, all this stuff's gonna happen, and it's gonna happen a lot faster than we think. So if you, I would just feel more comfortable saying, yeah, they can pick it up as, as when we call them basis, if that's what they can do, which I think they can.
Unneed basis.
You know, you gotta get what I'm trying to say.
You're setting them up as a vendor.
Strike contract, strike a big mistake as necessary.
Right. Well, because it's just that...
As need.
Yeah.
Like a will call.
And I don't know what the expectations from NRRA and whether or not...
And I don't either, and that's kind of what we need to, you to figure out now.
Well, I mean, in terms of time, a lot of people, women, enter into a contract without a time.
If they want one, then I guess you're gonna have to bring that back to us.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because, I mean, some of them don't. When I was talking to some of them before, it wasn't needed. But I just feel like this, this whole thing is fluid right now, and I don't want to be tied down to anything.
So I think, I think the motion, I'm gonna clean up Joe's a bit.
Thank you.
It's still his, but I think the motion is that we move to add Northeast Recovery, Resource Recovery Association as a vendor to the town, period.
To remove metal.
To remove metal.
In that case, Joe, are you willing to withdraw your second?
Yep.
Joe S., are you willing to withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Go. Need a second for Mike's.
I second Mike's motion.
I hope you weren't gonna ask me to remember that one.
Did you get all that, Robin? You're good. Motion made by Mike, seconded by Joe A. Joe Simone?
Yes, aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
The next item for your consideration is permission to release a lien. We have a former property owner in town that is transferring the property. They're no longer the owner. I'm not really sure of the details. However, this particular property owner did have a lien from welfare and from taxes. Taxes has been satisfied. I did speak to the collector. She's all set. I need to bring this to you for the welfare piece. And the monies that will come in are gonna be considered unanticipated revenue, because we didn't know this was gonna happen, and it has to go right to the general fund. It's not gonna go in any budget or any line. So the motion, we're using map and lot numbers, obviously.
Two motions here, right?
There are, yes.
Okay. So let's do the first one. We'll move to accept the unanticipated revenue in the amount of $3,831.14 from Alexander S. Buchanan, PLLC, to satisfy a lien.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe A. So is that the dollar amount for the welfare or the tax?
No, that's just the tax. The next one will be...
And MJ does it on her own. Our collector does it on her own.
Okay, so this is the welfare?
This is the welfare.
Okay, that's what I was...
And Alexander S. Buchanan is the law firm that's doing the closing?
Sure.
On the transfer.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yep. Okay. With that being stated, Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
And now we'll move to release the lien in the amount of $3,831.14 for map and lot number 6-15-9, having received a check in the amount, and authorize the town administrator to send a letter to the Registry of Deeds asking that the lien be lifted.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe A. Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous. I'd ask, Ms. O'Meara, if we jump to some of the new and old business before we start doing the manifest. You have some things on that list that I'd like to do.
I did. I wanted to update the board regarding position vacancies in town.
Yep.
Facility maintenance deck is part-time. It's been posted on the website since September 11th, and we've had no inquiries. The recreation coordinator's been posted on the New Hampshire Municipal Association website and our website since August 27th. We've had two inquiries, but have not done interviews yet. I think we probably might schedule them. Although one of the applicants only sent a letter of interest, not a resume. She has been advised that she needs to follow the resume, just like everyone else, and then she would be considered for an interview. The Highway Department, it's a part-time truck driver, equipment operator labor. I don't know that it's part-time, but I think that something's better than nothing, so they're gonna try and do that. That's been posted since May 21st, and there's been one inquiry. And of course, the Chief of Police Recruitment, since January of 2024, working with MRI, and we're actively interviewing, and we'll be wrapping up interviews for the third time on Monday, the 7th.
Yes, that's correct.
So I'm trying to, I'm trying to broach this in a way that folks have, who've been giving to the town on boards, committees, and commissions, do not, do not get offended. But I'm going to recommend that there are at least five boards, committees, and commissions where the board appoints, typically for a term of three years. What's been happening is, no one's been moving because the announcement of a term ending hasn't been followed, I guess.
Sure.
So I guess what I'm suggesting is, it's twofold. We really don't need to offend anybody who's doing the job now, but it's a way to attract more people to become involved in the town. If people see a vacancy, they say, hey, I'm interested in that. I might have to learn for a while, but I'd like to join X committee, Y committee. And even if no one applies, it's good form, quite frankly. It's very good form.
Yep.
So I, I, I don't know if I want to, I don't think we need a motion. So I, I, I don't know if I wanna, I don't think we need a motion, but it might be appropriate that all vacancies on committees, commissions, or boards that the Board of Selectmen make appointments to will be posted on the town website for a period of no less than thirty days. Sound okay?
So moved.
Sounds reasonable.
I'll second that.
Sure. Motion made by Joe A., seconded by Mike. Joe Simone?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
Please step up and say a name to the mic. Hard to distinguish all these people here.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Citizen's input was at the beginning.
Oh, was it? And you may or may not know this. For the Recreation Commission and the Conservation Commission, and I can't remember what year it was, it might have been twenty eleven, the somebody, I'm just gonna say, somebody decided to do a warrant article to change the amount of members required to be on recreation and on conservation. They decided that, oh, it was too hard to get a quorum if you really had, I'm gonna hypothetically say it was, you know, eight people on recreation and seven people on conservation. So a warrant article was put in and voted on that reduced the number of people on recreation and conservation. But what you should know is there is an RSA for both of those that says the amount of people that is supposed to be on them. So maybe, I don't know how we fix this if we have to
So there's no, there's no fixing it?
It doesn't, you can't do it.
Exactly. Once Mr. O'Meara investigates and sees the warrant article
Yeah.
and like verifies that, and then we see the RSA, whatever the, whatever the warrant article was, is null and void.
So that way, that'll bring a few more people that can
That's, that's
Yes.
Law will always trump a warrant article.
All right, I just wanna make sure. Thanks.
Yep. And Mr. O'Meara, you'll add that to your list?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. But yeah, that's
Yeah. No, great information. Thank you for that.
That's all I have for these updates.
What's the recreation donation of funds, or is that Joe Simone?
We're gonna do
I think I'll let, I'll let Joe handle that right now.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
I, I will mention that annually, the Recreation Commission asks the Board of Selectmen to accept the donation from the proceeds of Old Home Day, and it goes to the food pantry that we have. I was gonna put it on next meeting.
Absolutely.
Next meeting?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Well, it's not, it's not going there this year anyways. It wasn't going this, there this year anyways.
I, I don't know if there's a fund, or, or I, I should look into that, because it's not going in the budget. You can't. They have an appropriation that you established when you put it on the warrant. The warrant can't move up or down dollar value unless another warrant article says add to that. For example, last year's warrant, we recommended to the community, and the community agreed, to give us cemetery trustees a stipend. That, that favorable vote allows us to increase the operating budget warrant by that amount.
Right.
Because it's, it's added to it.
And it stayed on the default, because it was, yeah.
So let me look at this, and then we'll do it again at the next meeting, and I'll find out where this money actually goes. Unless you know, Joe?
They were gonna donate, they'd agreed to donate all the proceeds to the food pantry.
Right.
But where does it go? Is there, is there, is there a pickle jar in there?
No, I think it's a check that we write to the food pantry.
There's a line. We just got an email about having money in the food pantry. Me and you just got an email, I think. We will discuss this, like, we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Why don't we table it for next meeting?
Absolutely, and we'll figure out the, the mechanics
Just, right.
Of it, okay?
But, so we're clear. It cannot go in the operating
I completely agree and understand. It's different if you say, we're gonna buy, you know, forty cans of pasta sauce and stick it in the food pantry. That is fine. There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, I don't, the Recreation Commission doesn't pretend to know the needs of the community who avails themselves on that.
And I completely understand, so we just, we, we may have to adjust, but not a big deal. We just, I just wanna do it right. And we are good. All right.
Okay. I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred seventy dollars, zero cents from the Emergency Management Operations Checking Account, ending in three, zero, two, five, with the pay date of September twenty-third. Payment is to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles for invoice zero, seven, one, seven, two, zero, two, four, dash, one for the power stretcher, stretcher and installation.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. Before I call for a vote on this, Jim, this is, I guess this is the one that I was talking about. So when we did this in a meeting to approve the purchase of this, is this like the second half of it? Because we already approved this in a meeting, right, Robin?
Yeah.
So is this the act of writing a check? So like, am I gonna see one for the total purchase of the ambulance?
I was under the impression that was done.
So then this should be done as well?
So I guess it's a miscommunication between the treasurer and the keeper. The keeper wasn't aware that she needed to do a manifest.
Okay. All right, so it's just like So it's just cross M I T and done an I type thing?
It, it would be with, there were, I believe, two, possibly three different locations. We were drawing
It was, and we were getting it all together.
Right, to pay for the ambulance.
Right.
I didn't wanna come. I think that was it.
Exactly. That's what we were doing. So that, I, I, that's what I was talking about before, when I was talking about the downstairs. It was that line that I wanted to bring to attention, but if that's
No, I, I, this, this could go on hold till we meet again.
I wanna make sure it got paid. It did get paid, and we can put this on hold until we get to the, because I thought we were good. Like, I even had, Lisa was on Zoom and helping us through it, and I like, I thought we were golden. So if there was a hiccup, I wanna know what that problem was.
So I'll withdraw my motion? Did you get that, Robin?
I did.
All right.
So this is not for an ambulance. The request is for a power stretcher.
Which we
We already approved.
So, so that's, that's, I, I just, I guess I wanna know what exactly went wrong.
Yep.
And if it's just, you know, clerical correction, great, but I wanna know why.
Agreed. And, and I, I, I think that, I hope the, the taxpayers understand that we look at pennies.
Yeah.
And, and, and this is something that slipped through the cracks, because I'm pretty proud of how well we manage budgets and how, how you keep a watchful eye on the tax dollars that are being expended.
Also shows that we're not sleeping at the wheel.
Right.
We, we know what's, you know. Okay, so we'll just, we're tabling that one for now. It's fine.
Okay. I move to approve the payroll manifest in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and thirty cents for pay period of September eighth through the twenty-first of twenty twenty-four, with the pay date of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will say for the viewers out there, for the minutes, I do not need to do roll call anymore, because Joe Simone has dropped off Zoom, and it is just us four here in this room.
Right now, right now?
Right now.
Yep.
So.
I move to approve the withdrawal of four hundred and eighty dollars from the cable revolving account with a pay date of October first, twenty twenty-four. Payment is to Hewlett Packard Financial Services for computer leases.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of one thousand four hundred fifty dollars from the conservation checking account with the pay date of October first, twenty twenty-four. Payment is to S E C and Associates for work performed per the agreement of the Peanut Trail.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of nine hundred twenty-two dollars and seventeen cents from the Police Special Detail Account with the pay date of October first, twenty twenty-four. Payment is the state of New Hampshire for fuel.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of one hundred and two dollars from the Uniform Fire Watch Account with the pay date of October first, twenty twenty-four. Payment is to East Coast Emergency Outfitter for uniform shirts.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of three thousand six hundred sixty dollars and fifty-nine cents from the Town Anniversary Revolving Fund with the pay date of October first, twenty twenty-four. Payment of seven hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents is to R C Bradshaw for the two seventy-five flyer and mailing. Three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-six cents payable to David Simpson and two thousand four hundred ninety dollars and fourteen cents to Jim Ryan for reimbursement for cost associated with the two seventy-five celebration.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. Do we have any questions, or you said it like you kinda have a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve the vendor manifest in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred, fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents with the pay date of October first, twenty twenty-four. Payment includes one million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars to San Blon Regional School District and thirty-two thousand, one hundred, seven dollars and thirty-six cents to the town treasurer to move money from the main operating account to the highway construction account. Payment is associated with the block grant funds fiscal year twenty twenty-five, quarter one.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. Ms. O'Meara, can you
Yes.
Elaborate?
It, it appears that when the highway, when the highway block rate came in, it was added to the operating budget of the highway department, which is the opposite of what we're talking about right now. And this is basically, sometimes it's a journal entry, sometimes it's a, it's a, an accountant's change. It's to move the money into that fund, the highway construction account.
Okay.
Which is revolving, and the purpose is for roads in an emergency when operating budgets won't be able to absorb it.
Okay. That being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
I move to approve the ACH manifest.
Can we table this? You'll?
What I'm saying. Then I'm gonna table it.
I'm sorry, Joe.
I move to approve the ACH manifest in the amount of two hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents for payment of payroll taxes for twenty twenty-four.
So we are gonna table this until Mr. O'Meara can look into why?
So do we wanna have a second and then table it?
Don't do the second?
Sure, second it.
Second for discussion.
Oh, yeah, you can discuss it. Discuss about tabling it. We're gonna table that until further notice, until we can figure out. We need an explanation, so.
Motion to table is non-debatable.
That's correct.
But it does require a vote of the board to table it.
I'm motioning to table. Second motion, seconded by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. I know.
I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
I move to approve and accept the non-public meeting minutes dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Jack, you might as well just come right on up, buddy. We're ready for you. Don't get comfortable.
No, no, be comfortable, be nice. They say timing is everything, right? I don't know if you guys got this.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jack.
So sixty-nine thousand tons. So what, what these, uh Jack Cozak, representing the Newton Transfer Station. What these numbers are from two thousand and twenty-three, because they only come three times a year. They avoid it in the winter time. If you look at the numbers, I think in, in April, twenty-seven tons. On eight, nine, twenty tons, if you take a few, another twelve, twenty, twenty-two tons, that was for the year. And if you add the, the two thousand and twenty, that, that total, that total is sixty-nine, sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight tons. If you add the first pickup of two thousand and twenty-three, which is twenty-four thousand, R, the total for all four of those is ninety-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six. So no worse close than a hundred thousand, that I think everybody's hoping for, to settle.
Well, I will say that this year we are already at about eighty-four tons. Mike picked up sixty tons. So if Mike picked up sixty tons, and they already took out twenty-four tons in April, I get, it's up and down every year. It changes. I completely understand. But I'm just, so everybody knows, Mike said it was about sixty. He has hard numbers. He gave me a rough number on the phone. But that being said, we had already, Jack, just so you know, we already awarded NRR A, whatever they are.
We haven't, we haven't awarded, we have just, that's the, we're leaving. That's what you're talking about?
No, we did.
Oh, you did?
Oh, yeah.
We didn't award it to them, but what we wanted to do is talk to them about coming on an as need basis without a contractual agreement, because we're looking into, like Dan brought up, because the services for trash and all that are coming up. So this way here, it keeps all our doors and avenues open so that we could collectively see what we can actually do for the transfer station and get the most bang for the buck.
Okay, okay, good. I know that.
So Jack
They, they had some caveats to put in there and so forth. Any, any of those containers that look like a tank that people use for blowing out balloons, those that they want marked with a yellow, we already got that, we've done three or four of them already. Any tanks, that's for the guy that's picking it up, that he can see those, you know? Not sure if there's anything else, but I'm sure as we, as we come down and we see all the details, we'll find out more.
Sure.
Yep.
So, Jack, just so you know, Eastern Seaboard is gonna be backing away from taking anything out of there, and the board would like you to contact NRR A and tell them they could start picking up. But they're not, the town's not interested in the contract at this time, because of the fluidity associated with the pricing. But more importantly, we wanna keep our options open, should things go south. I don't know how they're gonna take it, so you really need to find out whether or not they're looking for a definite term, or they can go week to week or day to day, the way the board's interested.
Right, if they, if they wanna just do will call, like you guys call them, like, hey, the pile's getting big.
Yeah, I think, I think, as I remember the conversation, the three of us, the P and I, that's, that's what they look at.
And that's fine, and that
Because they, I think they come down with a, I think a body, a tank, I don't remember what that was. They wanna be able to fill that.
And that's fine, and, and the town would be more comfortable if it was just like, hey, we need a pickup. We'll send somebody down.
Yeah, before it goes way the hell out of
Exactly, and it's just, I, I just, I'd rather go that way. Like Bob said, the trash contract's coming up next year. I wanna be wide open on what we discuss with whoever, because if you can, you never know. Some of these trash companies want, want some metal as well, and that's great. Well, let's work on that, and, you know, I just wanna be open. And then maybe next year, once we figure all that out, we'll sign contracts, so.
Yeah, it was seven months, whatever.
Exactly.
I'm not sure if they pick up in the winter time, the other winter, or
Sure.
Yeah, we'll find out. And also, I know the government guy that we have, that's why you see it, April is the first time he came in.
Understandable.
Understandable.
Yep.
Okay, which is all good, because now, right now, we're just starting in into October, so we should be fine.
I have a couple of questions. The revenue that Mike got from me, taking in the, the metal, is that going to the, is it still out of town?
We haven't figured anything out yet, but yeah, it's going to the town, of course. It wouldn't go anywhere else.
The town can't spend its revenue, so it's gonna go into the general fund, but we can't spend it, so. One other thing, I know there was some, there was some talk last time I was here, and somebody mentioned that, you know, people are complaining that we closed some of the package now. I'll give you an illustration this weekend. First question I have, has anybody ever looked at a people are complaining that we closed some of the packages now. I'll give you an illustration this weekend. First question I have, has anybody ever looked at a Mellow bill?
A what bill?
Mellow.
A Mellow bill.
Every time they bill us.
Has anybody ever looked at one?
Every time they bill us.
And you realize it's two hundred and forty-five dollars to pick up a container?
Yep.
Whether it's empty or not. That is a retirement board. Give you a piece out of the package, no, not gonna do it work, it's, it's, he's, he hasn't been around for two days. Sorry, I worked all week, Saturday and Sunday. Saturday was kind of a light day. When we left, when it closed down, I got five, five. Packer number one had four hundred, four hundred tons of pressure, and packer number two was at six hundred. When I came in Sunday morning, and Sunday was always out busy as day, I closed out packer number one. Now, I'm talking to Abby, there was a key being posted all day morning. We monitored closely to make sure if, that it shoes and and that, what we want, we wanna fill it up, cause we don't wanna send something out that, you know, two hundred and forty-five bucks no matter what, there's a lot of money. So three o'clock, he called me, says, Jack, I think it's full. I went over, he said, we closed it, he reopened number one. Very little stuff getting in there at that time. So packer number two went out, and packer number one is used today. Now, packer number two being used today, it was filled, but it's going out tomorrow. When we left it on Sunday, it had about five, fifty, six hundred. So that's why, we, we're always trying to manage that too. So we come setting stuff up, it's three quarters full, we try to get it at the max. Sometimes I, it's necessary to close those packets now. You know, I've been working with the town, the town for fifteen years. If I've had five questions from any of, uh, uh, town people, and why we closed, and why we keep it closed for a while, I think only two or three people asked me that question, didn't like my answer, everybody else, we, we, we're trying to do, we're trying to save the town money. Twenty forty-five bucks for a container that's only five full is kicking the fence, you know? Plus you pay for the, whatever they pay for trash, at that particular time. I just wanted to explain that to you, cause we, we always wanted to. And, uh, Saturday morning, cause Saturday morning was beautiful, we were able to empty both of them on Friday because both of them were full. One was at fourteen fifty, and the other was just under fifteen. So when we decided Saturday that they'd never close all day morning, both one and two, because we didn't have to, you know? But as the results would happen on Sunday, completely different, because that's the end of the week. And we know that Su- Sundays are gonna be busy, you know, but it is the busiest week, and that's, so that's what we try to do, we try to manage that to, uh, you know, save the town some money. I just wanted to, I understand, but we do that, it was my focus, focus, put the damn sign up, and close it, cause we, we wanna close it. We monitor it very closely, yeah.
Thank you, Jack.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Jack, I think that's very helpful, because one of the consequences of keeping one closed, keeping in mind we're saving money
Yeah.
Is the line gets longer and people get more frustrated.
You know, well, I'll tell you tonight, at about three o'clock, we had twenty-five vehicles in the dump, twenty-five. So I had Frank, I said, open up number, number, uh, one. We weren't, no, I know that wasn't gonna go out. And everybody was happy, you know, you know, I mean, these people still had a weight that, you know, two or three vehicles in front of each one of those packers, it's basically full. You know, there was no static, no nothing. I was over there with Frank, making, I was hitting the buttons with him, make sure we get those things cleared, you know? Cause what happens to those packers, boy, they, I don't know when these things were made, it's like the cardboard. The cardboard packer, they probably only, it probably only used newspapers in there, now cardboard. I can't tell you how many times during the day it is jammed up. To, to clear it is incredible, cause the cardboard gets stuck. There's only an area for cardboard that's like this. When that thick cardboard goes in, but we live with it, and the same thing with the packers. We put a lot of cardboard in there, or a lot of trash running away. It slows down and that damn thing fills up like hell. We're constantly pushing it down, but anyway. We try to do our best of what we have.
Jack, do you think you can get together with, with Pete?
Can I?
Can you get together with Pete and provide me, and I'll provide the board, just a list of efficiencies you think, um, need to be done at the transfer station?
Mm-hmm.
And don't put any dollars beside it, or just look at what your thought process is for creating efficiencies in the operation.
Okay, sure, definitely, yeah.
If you're okay with that.
Yeah. Am I free?
I believe so.
Thank you.
No more questions, gentlemen? But I hope that explains the thing about packers, and it, and, you know, people might say, oh, why the hell you doing that? But again, I, I, I've been there a lot of years, and I'm very, very solemn about anybody saying, gee, why did you close that, you know? But we have a whole different breed of people in town now. We have a lot of residents from New Hampshire that, I mean, from Massachusetts, who never went to a dump before. And you can, it's a funny.
Excuse me, it's not a dump, it's a transfer station.
Excuse me, transfer station, that's right, Bob. You know, but, but they can, with a different view, sometimes they won't talk to you or anything else when you say, hi, how you doing? Because you can tell they don't wanna be down there. And the wives, if they're with them, God forbid they look out the window and see us Nazis out there. Go out of dump Nazis, you know? We've been called a lot worse, but, you know?
Thank you, Jack.
Oh, you're welcome very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
Does one? Dan? Say it.
All right. I move to go into a non-public session under RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, A.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Bob. So roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, that's unanimous.